Somewhere, we would like to thank Dr. Edler for.
Thank you, Dr. Edler.
The quantity that she brought in, if I see you making extra trips, that's perfectly all right. Just remember, if we take a quick recess, I'll make an extra trip. So, all right. So, the agenda workshop, I think the first item, Mr. Superintendent, do you have? I'd love to catch you right in the middle of a cookie bite. Would you like to give us any information on additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few. We have under committee, departmental reports. Item four, charter school quarterly report has been corrected and amended.
That's for today.
Right. Okay. And then we have on page four, the regular school board agenda, page four. Under human resource services, section C, risk management. Item one, backup has been corrected. That's the campus security resident lease at MacArthur Elementary School. And then also for the regular school board agenda on page four, under items from the superintendent, item D1 has been amended. That's the administrative appointments.
Thank you, sir. I will ask now and later, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hightower.
I have that we have an amendment in purchasing under, that's on the Hurricane Sally purchases. Do you have that one? Or is?
That's under what?
It's under budgeting, purchasing, and then there's an amendment, Hurricane Sally's purchases is what I have on the one I pulled up just now.
I don't have that.
Unless I'm in the wrong place.
Saint Seer, do you have any information?
Okay, never mind. Never mind, wrong one.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking, because I found the wrong one.
All right. Today is?
Yeah, that's what I thought I pulled up, but it didn't pull it up. I got it now. Thank you.
This is December, is that right? Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll let you pull it up so you can make sure. It'll also let me take a bite of this lovely looking cookie.
Yeah, I got it now. I give it, thank you.
So, we're good?
Yes, thank you.
That's not a problem. So, we do have a time certain at 9:30. We will go quickly on from before that. It looks like we can just move straight into the agenda for Tuesday night. PTA presentation stellar employee and scientists in every Florida school award. We have moved forward, the administrative appointments. There will be three.
Correct.
One will be not here, that would be the grant position. The unbelievable reappointment, new appointment of a new deputy superintendent.
Yes.
Sir. And the new principal at West Florida High School.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the individual who's not showing, that's a part-time.
Right, it is a 50%.
Yes.
Right, 0.5. Any questions on that, gentlemen, ladies? Okay. Next is the minutes for several meetings. Do we have any questions? We can address anything you'd like to. You do know that Holly is quarantining. Am I saying that correctly, ma'am? She was in the presence of someone. Thank you. All right. Then moving quickly on down into the new business section, permission to advertise. Number two, letter A, the notice of intent to advertise the renaming of the Tate High School football field, the Carl Madison Field. Do I have any questions on that item?
Mr. Chair.
I never can believe there are not any questions about Carl Madison, but go ahead.
Just to confirm that the procedure was followed, that's outlined in policy.
We went through it thoroughly, all of us that know the procedure. The principal followed the procedure of the school advisory council, made this recommendation to us. We are not initiating this naming. They are. And then I think it's the 19th, help me on that, January the 19th?
16th.
16th, excuse me. January the 16th, they will be having an event.
Yes.
At Hillcrest Baptist Church. No questions? Thank you. All right. And next is the advertise intent to adopt the amendments to the school board for the exceptional student education policies and procedures. No questions seen, thank you very much. We will move on into the consent agenda. Starting with curriculum, as always. Any questions on the three items that I see listed on the consent agenda, which includes the newly posted education plan and assurances for spring 2021?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, and we may want to, I might request that we move on through and come back to this, since we have a 9:30 time certain. But I think this is such an important document, and we did not receive it until late, and also for the public to understand what all is involved in here. I know as long as I've been a school board member and affiliated in education, there are things in here that I might not understand if I were to read it on the website. And I did have a few questions, but I know it might take longer than 19 minutes. So, if you want to go through and then we could come back to that, I would request that so that we wouldn't do part and then have to come back. But I really do think we ought to hear from the district what's going to be taking place so that everyone.
So, do I take it that no one has any questions on B1 or F1? The only item in curriculum that we will be discussing will be L1.
Okay, I can ask one question on the lease license agreement.
Go right ahead.
Have we seen a lot of revenue from that source in the past?
I do not.
I know Mr. Mayo's here, I needed him to talk.
I know Mr. Mayo is here, because that revenue comes to the district and then is distributed, I believe, to each of the schools, so he's prepared to share some of that with you.
Good morning.
Thank you. I wanted you to be used while you were here.
Exactly, the Pell Grant is a, I mean, the Pell Industries is a, it's really more a screen printing company. And the school district entered that back in 2014, I understand. So, I've kind of just been brought along as we went. But I did a little research, and what it is, it's a generic shirt. Each school gets one. You know, it's not anything sports specific, so it's not like Washington football or Tate band. So, for those sports specific items, people are still going to go to the venues and all that. But these are what you would see at Walmart, Target, or Academy. You know, they're just generic T-shirts, or it could be a sweater, something like that. So, it's no financial investment on our part. And the only thing we do is we just receive the royalty checks. And they're not large, but to date, it's been just under $8,000. It's been divided up among our various high schools. And basically, they're stocked based on people requesting them, based on selling history, how well they sell. So, some of our high schools do, you know, much better, of course. You know, Tate does well, because a lot of their band people obviously purchase them. So, but that's what it is. This year to date, we've already brought in about 13, you know, $1,349 to date so far this year. And, you know, expect it to be higher because of the COVID crisis and seating capacities, and we aren't selling souvenirs at our venues right now. We don't have our souvenir stands open. So, I think it'll be a little larger. And the other thing is, this company just did open up this past month, of which we just, they just rolled it out and sent me the information. Now, if we continue, then I'll pass it on, but then they'll have an online service where people can go online and purchase these same items. And we still, of course, continue to get the same amount of royalties.
Thank you.
Okay. And from what I've seen, they pretty well target the area that the school is in. And so, you'll see fewer Escambia or PHS shirts in Enslie. But over toward Escambia, you see more there and less Tate and Washington and other shirts in there. They try to generate interest by the quantities and the fact that that's the area that the people probably shop in. So, yeah.
Yes, sir. That's exactly how it works.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Without delaying it, we're not expecting any speakers on the charter schools, are we, or anything besides your report? So, does anybody have a problem if I just move that item forward?
That's fine.
Superintendent, everybody good with that?
Yep, absolutely.
Welcome to the podium, ma'am. Good morning.
Very straightforward report this month for our charter schools.
Am I correct in saying the only reason it was amended is you added December?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They, obviously, when we did our return to school plan, all of our charter schools opted to be a part of our district's plan. So, keep in mind that we're monitoring that they are in compliance with that and offering all models of learning that our school district is offering. So, if you had any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, I see.
I have actually one question on finances on one of the charter schools, and it might be Mr. Saint Seer that may have to come in on it. But for Jacqueline Harris, is that fund balance? The fund balance are showing for Jacqueline, have you had a chance to look at it? It appears to be a lot lower than the other charter schools, and that's what I was looking at.
Well, they did fall below the equity.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The equity did fall below, but that's only because they had to do a depreciation adjustment.
That's why the fund balance is showing so low?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the only reason. And also, in September, they had three paydays, and that affected their fund balance.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the other charter schools, and they look like much better fund balance.
Right. But they did have an adjustment at the end of June.
Okay.
About the depreciation.
Thank you very much. So, I take it that all of them are healthy?
Yes.
Following all the regulations, as I see?
Correct. And Mr. Marcaniou will go into more detail about their piece with this new executive order. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions on that item?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Hey, Ms. Coates.
Yes, sir.
With regards to COVID, are they, they're following the same procedures that we follow with our schools? And have their numbers been within the same as ours? Do you know?
Yes, sir. They're experiencing all of the challenges that we are, and we've had great support from our school district staff in making sure that they have, you know, everything they need and that they are following what we are doing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
That brought up a question. Are they reflected in our COVID numbers that we have on our dashboard? Are the charters included in that?
Yes, ma'am.
I had asked her earlier about whether they had a number of students in, you know, in innovative learning environments, to use the state's vernacular. And she has those numbers, if anyone else, you know, I don't know that you have them right now, because she said she, but she could get them.
I do.
Because I, you did get them, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you share those?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. Capstone currently has 20 traditional students and two remote. Burnville has 158 traditional, 20 remote. Jackie Harris, 103 traditional and 76 remote. Pensacola Beach, 118 traditional, 12 remote. Beulah Academy, 238 traditional and 49 remote.
Thank you.
And that information is housed in our focused student information system, just like it is for our traditional schools. Okay? And we keep up with that on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. All right. Any other questions?
Do we know how many of them are getting the letters that are being sent out?
They have not submitted their plans to our department yet. They will be sending letters. They will not be exactly like our district letters, but they will reflect most of that information. That is part of, they have the same assurances that we are asked to do, they are as well. So, yes, their remote learners that are not making adequate yearly progress will be notified with the same provisions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Now, Ms. Hightower, the floor is yours.
Well, I just would like to go through this document. Because I think some of the things could be answered, but my primary thought as I was reading through this is about cost. How much of this do we already have? How much additional expense will we have to provide the innovative parts? And then just one question later on about decision trees.
Sir, I'd be happy to go through and give just a summary of the document, because I think it's important that you see, and I know you're looking at it.
Dr. Smith says, take it home.
Okay, great. All right. And then we'll certainly answer your question, Mrs. Hightower. We have several staff members here that can answer your more specific questions regarding some of the products that we use and so forth, as far as curriculum. So, on page two is where, well, again, I want to remind you that I know the cover page says it's due December 15th. Again, the chancellor has given us permission to submit it on the 16th, the day after you all approve it. On page two is where the assurances start, and as I said, there are seven altogether. The first one is the assurance that we, all of our schools will remain open for five days a week in-person instruction. The second one is that we continue to provide all the services that are necessary for students to meet their individual needs, specifically with students with IEPs and ELL students and so forth. So, I'm going through these quickly. I'm not going to read them to you. I'm giving you the overview, the highlights. Assurance number three is continued progress monitoring and interventions. And that is a, that is really 25% of the content in the narrative part of the plan, and we'll take a look at that in just a moment. But the expectation is, is that progress monitoring, progress monitoring and interventions is being done, are being provided for all students regardless of the learning modality that they are in. Number four is the one that was just referenced regarding charter schools, and that is to continue to extend the same flexibility of instructional methods and funding to every charter school. So, as Ms. Coates said, the charter schools received a plan template from DOE that is similar to ours, but not exact. And their deadline to get their plan to the district is December 15th. And then when Ms. Coates receives those plans, she will do a review of them, and then she and I will meet along with the appropriate level director. I mean, most of our, most of our charters are elementary, but we do have a middle. And we will review the plans and then provide feedback to the charter schools in terms of our approval. They do not, it is not required that those come to you for approval. So, the fifth one is the innovative learning model. And this is the one that we really went into the details yesterday about in regards to the fact that a student in the innovative learning model, again, we refer to that as remote learners, that for those students that are not making adequate academic progress, that they receive that written notification. So, everything I said to you yesterday is really what is encompassed in assurance number five. So, I won't, I won't go into that anymore. But one of the sections in the narrative is where we get into a little bit more detail about explaining that in the plan. Assurance number six is that the district will continue to provide enhanced outreach to parents and guardians to ensure maximum in-person student enrollment and so forth. And so, we have some strategies in there that will, in the plan that we'll talk about. And then the number seven is continued professional development. And then, and that is actually section four in the narrative of the plan. So, you can see we're obviously checking all of the boxes for the assurances. And in doing that, as I said yesterday, and in receiving an approved plan from the state, that allows the district to benefit from the fact that we will be held harmless for survey three, with the exception of the proration that we talked about in regards to the school districts that are over in enrollment, that they will, they will take some of that funding from other districts. But anyway, any questions about that overview? Because the next thing I'm going to do is go into each of the four sections of the narrative of the plan. And I know, Mrs. Hightower, your question regarding resources associated with some of these strategies, I'll be able to answer that and give you my opinion on that at least. Okay. So, then moving forward, and again, the opening statement there just talks about that this plan is for all students, regarding, regardless of the program that they are in. So, you see mention of our DJJ programs and so forth, and it would also pertain to our contracted programs such as Camelot. So, number one is focus on closing the achievement gap. And so this narrative, and again, I'm not going to read it to you, but it talks about the fact that we use the MTSS process to, to help figure out what is best for students. It kind of goes back to what Dr. Adler said yesterday in terms of meeting, the, meeting the individual needs of the students. We talk about that we have an additional 60 minutes of language arts built into the schedule for elementary students, and that's where a lot of the remediation and so forth happens. Do you have a question, Mrs. Hightower?
I do. I want to know, when you say you're focusing on closing the achievement gap, and it may be more specific in the, in the next section where you go into more detail, what's your beginning number? Where, where are you moving? What's your starting point so that you know that you've moved people?
Well, the, the starting point based on student achievement would be, of course, you know, we don't have, we don't have FSA scores for last year. So we have the 2019 FSA scores. That is one of the data elements for how students were performing. As I said yesterday, we did have some, some high school students that did take the FSA test over the summer because that is part of their graduation requirements. We, we use progress monitoring data. So the, the, the initial baseline, so to speak, would be our AP1 data for our STAR 360 assessment. That's going to tell us where that student is performing. And, and of course, and that's broken out into the levels just like it is for FSA. So we would want a student to be, on grade level would be a level three, excuse me. So for those students that are scoring at level one, that's really what we're talking about here in terms of those students having a, an achievement gap and, and all of the strategies and interventions for those students in particular. And that's what this plan is all about, is those students that are not making adequate progress and are not on grade level for how we are going to try to increase their learning opportunities. So I hope I answered your question. And again, STAR 360 is just one of the pieces that we use, but we use I Ready and also.
The reason I ask that question is, as we move toward, you know, I, I said yesterday that I wanted to look at midpoint. And Mr. Wilson shared with us that we, you know, really don't have that FSA test score. So, you know, in order to know, in my mind, if we on the board are about achievement of our students, that is our goal, then we turn it over to the superintendent to make it happen. So if you can only use AP1, can we have the data that shares with us where our students were at the beginning of this school year? I mean, not individually, because I know probably each student will have an individualized plan based on their needs. That's what I Ready does and all those things. But, you know, I'd like to be able to, at some point down the line, be able to say, our students started here. And whether they were traditional or whether they were remote, and we'll have to look at data that says the student was 30 days remote and 100 and whatever days. Because I can't say 180 because we had hurricanes and everything. But, you know, where we are midpoint, are we, do we need to increase our interventions at midpoint because we haven't gotten as far as we should have in order to be ready at the end of the school year? You know, because I think those are things that the board might need to look at. You know, is, are there additional resources that we need to, to, to offer?
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm going on that.
So, so, you know, I mentioned AP1, and I referred to that as the baseline data. But now we have just finished our AP2 testing period. Okay? So students, students will take the STAR 360 assessment four times, AP1, AP2, which we just finished. And then AP3 sometime around February, I think. And, and, and that's the data that we use that best helps us predict what their FSA score is going to be. So you all have seen over the years, we've come to you with some of our DA schools right after AP3 testing. And we've given you those documents with the grids that show you the cells for the school grades. All of those predictions were, were based on AP3 data. Okay? And at, at a very conservative, conservative look. So we, we, we do, we're doing the same thing this year. So it sounds like you're saying, Mrs. Hightower, that, that you'd like to know from AP1 to AP2, and then from AP2 to, or AP1 to AP3, are students, are we seeing an increase in the percentage of students going from one to two, two to three, three, and so forth? And we, we will have that data. Again, we just finished AP2. We've provided it for you in the past. And so I, but I think that's what you're talking about. Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So please.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I?
I do not.
Okay. Great question. And it's really a great focus point for us. Where have we been and where are we going? And Mr. Marciano's work, I, I think addresses some of those interventions that we have to take because we, we are going to have to really put some good interventions in place. And not only currently, but in the summertime, because we have had students, through all that's taken place, who have not gained as much as they might have in a regular school year, in a, a regular platform. So that is a great concern. And I really appreciate you asking that question because I think it really speaks to how can we help our kids who have been struggling to, to move forward? And there's kind of a two-prong, in addition to what Mr. Marciano shared about the short term, we also can't lose sight of, of the, the greater spectrum here. So it does go back to that 1819 FSA, that, that state data. So we can, we, those gaps are clearly identified. So the short term are going to be more focused on, on the standards that have been taught in this early portion of the year. Certainly indicators to how that progress is going. But, but the, the eventual measure is going to be that next round of, of state testing and where have we gone in the, the two-year gap? So again, I just, I just want to thank you for asking that question because I think the interventions and the resources for them are going to be critical.
And, and if I could say, Mrs. Hightower, when you look at the bottom of page five, you see that one of the progress monitoring, progress monitoring tools that we are using for grades 11 through 12 is called USA Test Prep. And so that, that's an example of something that we did use CARES Act funding for at the beginning of the year because we really, we really didn't have a solid tool for grades 11 and 12 for progress monitoring. We use STAR 360 up through 10th grade. So, so, you know, we, we use CARES Act funding to purchase those materials for, you know, to, to fill in that gap for progress monitoring. So, so again, okay, so I'm going to move on to, and I heard, I heard you ask about a decision tree, Mrs. Hightower. I know there's mention of that in here as part of our K-12 reading plan, I think.
Yes, it's mentioned in the elementary part and as well in, I think in the high school.
So, so Mrs. Marsh is here, and she's, she works with staff and with directors and is, under her leadership is the development of our K-12 reading plan. If you'd like, I can ask her to come up and give you a little bit more details on that.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Permission to ask my colleague and partner in crime, Jessica Rowell, to step forward. She's my secondary person, and she can speak to the secondary decision tree. So in the spring of every year, we develop a reading plan to receive our reading allocation funding. And in that plan, we have to outline how we will progress monitor students, what assessments we will use, and how we, we will determine whether a student has a reading deficiency. And then the interventions that are research and evidence-based that we will use to intervene. So that plan has been approved, and it is on the DOE website. So that's the decision tree that we're referring to, that it outlines. And we don't just use one piece of data when we are making a decision about an intervention. We take into account several pieces of data, one-on-one teacher assessment as well as standardized testing. The secondary decision tree is a little different because of the way that we intervene at high school. So I'm going to let Jessica speak to the secondary decision tree.
Thank you. Secondary decision tree is based on those students who are either scheduled into intervention based on FSA data or several other data points. Again, since we did not have a current FSA score, we created a combined factor scale, which took into a weighted average of historical FSA data, STAR data, and then other particular reading screening or intervention points. Those were created for all of our secondary schools in the spring so they could schedule for their fall classes, since we did not have that first level of indication. The secondary decision trees not only have those recommended programs and materials, it also includes a frequency of assessments and gives different points of evaluation to know if an intervention should be continued or discontinued. So we mention those because there is a, a high level of detail with us having to bog down all the wording on this document going to the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody in here may understand that, but I, I just felt like that we needed to talk about, it's not just Dr. Smith's decision, that there is a process that goes through that and all the components of it, so that people understand that, you know, when we talk to them, when they get their letters and we talk to them, it's not one. You were very clear that any one of those could have triggered the letter.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and these are things that we're putting in place so that if you come back into school and your child is not where he or she probably would have been, that these are things that we're looking at to make these decisions, to provide the best intervention. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to make sure that, again, the expectation is that we will do the, we will provide the interventions to the best of our ability regardless of the learning modality.
Right.
But I think everybody understands that it's, it's much more effective to do that if the student is in face-to-face instruction.
Good point.
You know, you just, you eliminate some technical barriers when, when the student is in the classroom. So any other questions about the?
Mr. Chair? Sir. Yeah. Are y'all foreseeing any need for additional resources to meet this demand when these students are coming back, that's all getting all these letters?
So.
Can you handle the?
Well, you know, in terms of staffing, I mean, again, the, the schools have not, we didn't take any staffing away. We knew that we were overstaffed specifically at the elementary level, not so much at middle and high. What, and, and I said this yesterday, the complexity of it is as they come back, the, the, the shifting of the, of assignments. You may have a teacher who's been doing full remote that now has to, to do hybrid or now has to teach face-to-face. And that'd be great. Again, we're trying to draw down the number of remote learners. So it's really not about additional resources. It, it's really about just the work effort at the school to put those puzzle pieces together and, and make sure that the schedule works to meet the needs of the students as they return. And keep in mind, as I said yesterday, not, there's nothing in this plan about taking options away. So while this effort is about notifying parents of remote learners that their student is not making enough progress, parents of a traditional student can say today, I want my child to go to remote. And we've talked about that with principals, because if they, if that's happening now, the message that we would say to the parent is, well, let's see how your student is doing. And let me make sure you understand, we're going to be monitoring your student's progress. And we've sent letters to some parents already. And if, if that student was not being successful and traditional, we might have the parent sign the letter, you know, do the child study team and, and so forth to document that they understand. But the options are still there. So, but as far as additional resources, the other part of this section 1.8.2, in terms of additional instructional time, is, is really heavy on our summer school. And so I'm, I'm going to check, is there any more questions for these ladies?
No.
No, thank you very, very much.
I didn't think so, but, I didn't think so. Thank you. If there are some later, we'll call you back or something, but.
Yeah, don't run away. But I think the, one thing it's fair to say is the, the main workload of bringing students back falls not on hampering what the student will receive. The workload falls on the school to try to fit them in the puzzle that they've not been part of. I don't know. I, I mean, I, I have great sympathy for whoever's doing schedule changes.
Yes, sir.
Data clerks, assistant principals, principals. Because all of a sudden, you've got someone who's not been participating, and all of a sudden, they want to go into classes that they've been taking. Well, here we go with class size.
Class size.
A class size amendment. Now, we have to make it all fit. So I, I agree. And it's really going to fall, I mentioned, assistant principals and principals and, and data clerks. But let's not leave out our teachers. All of a sudden, their whole instructional plan may shift. If they've been doing nothing but remote and they have an influx of students, they may have to leave that and do the hybrid, which, that's not a popular word.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it's, this is, this is throwing an unknown kink into our second semester plans. And it could be very difficult. So just be prepared for parents who say, well, that's not what they were doing. Well, okay, but we can't duplicate that. And they may not get the same teacher.
I, I was just going to say that because I know that's.
That's one of the main things. I want, I want them to have, I'm going to use Ms. Woods out of, out of ransom in her math class. But Ms. Woods may not be able to take that student. So the defense to me is we're going to do everything we can to educate your child to give, do the best job we can, but we have to do this. We don't have a choice. We didn't add, we didn't invent this. The 30th of November, we didn't say, oh, this is a good idea. Let's all of a sudden do it. Someone else did. Excuse me, go ahead. I had to get my little sermon over.
Appreciate that, sir. So.
I had one more, kind of a, an editorial in the second paragraph under, on closing the achievement gap. Can you just use the dates of the FSA that you're using instead of saying prior, prior?
What page are you on, Mrs.?
On page five.
Second paragraph. Well, the reason we said prior, prior is that, keep in mind, we don't, we don't have scores for last year. So the, the, the term prior, prior is actually a term the state is using.
Oh.
Because that's how, that's how.
And you should know that that's not our invention.
Yeah, that's how, that's how a learning gain will be determined. You'll have, you have to go back two years because there's no data for last year to determine if a student makes, so that prior, prior is a state term. Yeah.
Prior, prior. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
But the, you know, the part about additional instructional time, we have, we have language in here about schools offering tutoring and so forth. And there's our, there are some schools, you see in the bottom of the first paragraph where we've linked a schedule to the document. And those are schools that have TISA funds and, or UNICEF funds and had planned early on to, to provide extended, you know, Saturdays and things of that sort. But our main focus for additional instructional time is going to be our summer programming. And as you know, we bring our summer school document to the board in February for approval. And so there, we're, we're saying we're going to offer a K-8 summer school opportunities for, for students. And so I would expect that the CARES Act would be the major fund source for that. I'll leave that up to Mr. St. Sarah to, I'm not trying to take, tell him how to do his job. But our point is, is that, you know, we, we know we're going to have to try to serve as many students as possible for summer school. And so that is a big piece of the, part of additional instructional time. And of course, we also talk about that we do offer our course, we call it COINBowl, but our credit recovery for our high school students. That's going on. It'll go on second semester. And as you know, we offer two sessions of that in the summer also for credit recovery. So.
Are you anticipating that to be a larger program this year?
I'm, I'm, I'm not really sure, Mrs. Hightower. Until we, until we, you know, we get through this first semester and we see the, you know, how many students, if, if there would be more students that, for, for whatever reason, didn't pass first semester, that would be an indication.
Okay.
But, but, but also, you know, we, we use that service or that program for students that, that maybe are short from last year, you know? So it's not just based on this first semester. One, one B is about targeted outreach for students demonstrating decline. And this, this is just more information about referring to our decision tree and our K-12. more information about referring to our decision tree and our K-12 plan and using online resources and so forth for making sure that they have additional time on tasks. For example, that second paragraph, you heard me say yesterday, that the Florida Virtual School curriculum for elementary students, there is no intensive reading course. So we had to work with that curriculum, and so even our virtual students in elementary school, excuse me, they are scheduled to log in and essentially do a remote lesson for intensive reading with the teacher at the school or a teacher for those students that need that additional support. Going to move on to, actually, I'd like to move on to the number, Section 2 on page nine. This is about everything we've talked about for notifying parents of those students of remote learners. So we've really talked about everything in here. This outlines the process that we used, the definitions. We took the definition of not making adequate progress right off of the letter, and you see that in those three paragraphs in the box 2A. And then on page 10, we go into more details about if parents who insist on keeping their student in remote would be required to do a child study team and then using social workers, everything that I talked about yesterday, about the schools accounting for every student on that list who receives a letter. And then you see that we've linked the three letters to the document, which was something that they asked us to do. Section 3 is enhanced outreach truancy attendance of students, and so this is all that information regarding what we do when students are having attendance issues and high absenteeism and so forth. I'm not going to read each of those to you, but it talks about using school social workers to make sure that technology needs are being met, if a student needs a hotspot, and just all of those things, attendance, child study team, and so forth. On page 12 in Section B, this is an effort that Dr. Cola was instrumental in helping with. We have reached out to the Early Learning Coalition and received information about parents who applied for a state certificate of eligibility for VPK, but then, but did not use it. In other words, they thought they were going to send their student to pre-K and they didn't use it. So now we know who those parents are, and we can reach out to them, and we've talked to Dr. Smith about if we can get students to come back second semester, that we would have to stand up some additional classes, because we did, we consolidated our pre-K classes after our enrollment was so low in the fall. And then also working with the Early Learning Coalition to provide this program called Ready Rosie that sends learning, ideas for learning for young learners onto a parent's phone to give them ideas about how to be being their student's teacher while their child is at home. And then we also plan on doing a call-out to just make sure that if parents, even a kindergarten student, that they decided that, you know, to not enroll in kindergarten, if they want to bring them back, we will work to try to get that student back. Okay?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
As you're reaching out to the VPK voucher students, but I've had some conversation with some principals at elementary school level that think one of the reasons their kindergarten numbers are down is because there are people that just decided not to put their kids in school because of the situation. So I must, I guess the question is, because VPK is voluntary pre-K, how does that work if they come back just for one semester in the way of the number, the hours that they have to have to be, you know, if they do summer program, it's a long day for the students to get the numbers in? How would one semester as a VPK, would that translate until they've gotten their VPK requirement done or not?
Yeah, I would think not, you know, in terms of whether, in other words, whether that student was ready to go to kindergarten the following year or not. I think we would look at that on an individual basis, but even if a student was kindergarten age and decided to, the parent decided to enroll second semester, I think it's likely that that student would need to be in kindergarten again the next year, but it just depends. It depends on where that student is developmentally and so forth. So, you know, we would figure that out based on the student and where they are. And then Section 4 is all about professional development. You see some narratives there about the different professional development that was done back at the beginning of the year during the, again, the two-week delay to get started, and I won't go into detail on that, but it's, there's a lot of detail there about the PD that was, has been provided and is continuing to be provided on an ongoing basis. And so I'll just, I'll answer any questions you have about that.
Continue.
I have a couple of questions that are kind of off of this, but on this.
How do you define that?
Patty's brain.
Typical, typical. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I hadn't thought about that word.
One of the questions that came to mind after yesterday's discussion is, were we able to continue to do our parent conferences after our first quarter, the ones that were put in place with our first grade?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So they either met virtually or...
As far as I know, I mean, I have no reason to think that we...
Because we usually get the data for that first, do we get it in January? I guess this year it probably wouldn't be available at least until February, but I was thinking we usually got something about this time that told us how many conferences had needed to be held, because I'm assuming the number might have been larger this year, although I think after the first quarter, they contact every parent.
Right, that's correct.
Correct? And then it's the second quarter that...
We can work on getting that information to you.
Okay, well, I mean, you can wait until after the second quarter to kind of see whether the number declined or went up.
Okay.
And then the other question that, as I was reviewing my notes from yesterday, the number may have come across and I just didn't get it down, when we were looking at the number of letters that went out, how many of the high school letters are seniors?
And I don't have that information. I can probably get it.
I saw that Ms. Morgan wasn't here, so I, but...
Yeah, well, she, I doubt she would know either, because, and Mr. Dillard would need to give that to us. Actually, now that the report is in focus, we, I'll see if we can drill down to that or not. We probably can.
Okay.
But that, what I gave you yesterday obviously was summary data.
Okay.
It should be available.
Thank you. I just kind of wondered how many were at risk for not being able to graduate. Thank you for indulging me.
You're welcome. You owe us 22 minutes now. One of the things that I heard in a newscast, and I'm just going to quiz the superintendent on if he's heard this, and it concerned me, because we were talking about the VPK not enrolling students, is that the serum that's coming out should not be given to students under the age of 16. Have you heard that?
I have not heard that, but I do have a meeting this afternoon with our health coordinator, so that will be a good question. She's been in contact with the health department in light of all the CDC recommendations, so we'll be meeting this afternoon.
Would you quiz on that? Because it concerns me, this may be a trend until they come out with something they say is safe, and maybe, I don't think I misunderstood it, because it immediately got my attention when it said below the age of 16. And I have two granddaughters that are below the age of 16. And so I was just curious why, and if that's true for all of the serums that are coming out, and it could affect us for the future in enrollments.
Yes. Thank you for sharing that information, because that's big.
Okay, thank you. And if I'm wrong, please tell me. That's my problem.
Paul, carry me.
Yes, him?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Marcany and the CNI staff. This year has been monumental in the work that's had to happen overnight and gets pushed out, and the return from DOE is instantaneous, which, you know, it's overwhelming when you have months to do something this specific, but when you have to do it within a number of weeks, I know that a lot of people spend a lot of time and a lot of weekends and the times at night getting this together, and we, I want you to know that we do appreciate everything that your staff, you and your staff have done, and know the effort that goes into it while still keeping the day-to-day operations going in the classrooms and in the schools. It's been monumental, and I just want to say kudos and thank you.
Uh-huh. Well said, and that's very appropriate. And you said lots of weekends, and I'm thinking, wasn't lots of weekends, because I didn't have lots of weekends, too.
True.
Yeah, and so it's very important. Let me get my board member in, then I'll be right back to you. Yes?
Yeah, I believe you had a 10-day turnaround on it, didn't you? Something of that sort to get this ready?
For this plan?
Yes.
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days? So...
Yes, sir.
Meet Richard Corcoran's executive order?
Yeah.
So, yeah, great job.
Well, you know, my deadline, I mean, I lost a few of the days towards the end of this, December 15th, because getting it on the board agenda and so forth, you know.
Right, right. Very good job.
A lot of staff helped put this together.
And it'd be great for these parents to get these letters, to see where their child's at.
Yes, sir.
And it'd be great for us to get that indication that he signed the letter.
Absolutely.
And I hope we keep them stored pretty well wherever we go put them.
I anticipate the list of the students who, and this is what I'm going to tell principals, that when they pull the report, as I said yesterday, they're going to need to account for every student who received the letter. Did they come back and enroll traditional? If not, did they sign a letter and so forth? Did we have the child study? So that's, because I think that will probably be one of the things that DOE asks us to document and perhaps send at the summer. So can I just clarify my comment about the VPK students? So my staff has reminded me that we would not be able to enroll a new student in VPK second semester because of the hour requirement, but we could enroll into a pre-K class but would have to find a different fund source to fund that, because we could not use VPK dollars. So, my opinion, if that parent is willing to bring that student back, we ought to figure out how to fund it so that that student is in a learning environment, but cross that bridge as we see those that might come back, so.
No, I think what you're saying is they're better off with us than sitting at home.
That is what I'm saying, sir.
That's right. Dr. Etler, you had something?
Yes, I want to make sure you were referencing the vaccine when you were saying, okay.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, the vaccine. The word escaped to me at the moment.
Right. Well, the latest, because what they were looking at is those children 16 to 18. And so the latest word that I heard on the news is that it's been cleared and that the 16 and 17 can also take that vaccine.
But not below 16?
Right. Well, they never did recommend below 16, it was 16, 18.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, one more thing I want to say, so that everybody be not scared to death, when I am going to pull this item Tuesday night, so that we can do what we just did, thank the staff for their work. I don't think we can say that enough.
Right.
We've done it here, but I think, you know, because I, when I met with Mr. Marcany and some of his staff on Thursday, you know, I think we got it from FSBA or I got it from the Florida PTA, I got the template that was to be used. And I thought to myself, I won't say what I thought, but it was, you know, the timeline and the fact that it was holidays and the fact the board had to approve it and all of those steps. But then when I was reading through all of the letters, there were questions that I asked about how we were going to be sure that parents responded, and how were we going to keep up with who responded and who didn't respond? And his staff could answer all of my questions. So, again, I was, it was confirming what I know. They do think through that process, you know? No, we're not going to get to everybody, because we're going to find that the letter went to an address that is no longer current. But the fact that each principal is responsible for making sure they contact or send someone to contact anyone they have not heard from should make us all feel very proud that we've got people that have put all these processes in place in such a short period of time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, moving out of curriculum, you can relax, Mr. Marcany, we're leaving that area. But very good, you know, I'm not going to go over it again, but tremendous job. All right, finance and business services, any questions in that area?
Mr. Chair?
I think I hear Ms. Hightower.
Yes, ma'am.
It's under the miscellaneous salary schedule, but it's kind of tangential, because I wanted to talk, because it says conditional substitute teacher position. I wondered if we could get a report on our fill rate for substitute teachers right now?
And the answer is...
You mean, right now?
Well, I know you and I had...
Today we had 303 teachers and teacher assistant absences, and we filled right at 200, so that, do that math. Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith is actually, you know, yesterday we talked about bus operators. The other thing he's charged us with is working on substitute fill rates for all types of employees. We've got our team together working on that. We actually have a few things that we believe we'll be bringing back to the board in the future. Did you ask specifically also about conditional substitutes?
Well, I was, it was the way I was getting to be able to ask that question.
One of the items that we will be talking to Dr. Smith about and hopefully being able to bring to you, you know, in the, in board policy, it talks about an emergency or critical situations for us to be able to use conditional substitutes without, with the waiver of the 500 hours specifically volunteered at that site. We believe we're at the point where we're at a critical situation, we would like to waive that 500 hours. I actually talked to a principal yesterday that had nine teachers out, only had, I think, three of those jobs filled. So I would say that's critical whenever you're at a school and you got that many spots open. Also, as of yesterday, we had sent a email, last week, Courtney Combs has sent an email to 400 substitutes that have not worked, substitute teachers specifically, that have not worked since August of this school year, and it tells when we need them. Please come back. Hopefully that will help us as we start into January and get into the second semester. But Dr. Smith has charged us to work on that particular item, and we're going to do so. So I would think, I know you talked yesterday about bus operators, maybe being able to get back to you by the end of the year. This substitute teacher, we hope to be able to get back to you in a month or if not two months.
Because I know I shared with Dr. Smith, and I think with you, the article that I read about one of the counties in the Far Panhandle...
You did, yes, ma'am.
And some of the innovative things they were doing, don't know whether it's been successful or not, and I know that that's probably part of what you're looking at. Did any of this that they put into place make a difference in their fill rate? Because that's the critical piece, is, yes, let's look at what they did, but then we need to actually see, because they were, this county was offering additional compensation for Monday and Friday substitutes, for critical schools, you know, and those kind of things. So I think that...
So does Human Resources know what county this is?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
They do.
Because the number one thing, it's nice to offer it, but does it work? It's the question.
Yeah, that's the question.
Yeah. I'm a picky brain. 400 have not subbed this year that are on our list. How big is our list?
About 680.
So you're telling me that only 280 subs... So you're telling me that only 280 subs of today, there are 300 vacancies. We didn't have enough.
That is, we have nothing enough. We have 600, only 200 plus are working.
Right.
Which is alarming.
That's alarming. Yes, it is. Okay. Thank you for bringing that to us and we'll look for the follow-up on that.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
That it, Ms. Hightower?
Yeah.
Throwing the ball over there? Okay, Mr. Fetzko?
Well, while we're on the miscellaneous salary schedule, the, it says bus driver trainee and it's the school bus operator starting hourly rate with a 2. And when I go down to the 2, it's just, it doesn't give an amount. And I don't know if I'm missing something somewhere, but it just says paid upon successful completion. But there's not an amount like there are in other positions. I
Well, the amount is the starting rate, but we're not going to put that because that would change as the ESP salary schedule changes. I believe that's right.
Could you just?
I'm going to, I'm going to verify right now. I believe it's, it is step zero and I believe that's $12.60 something, but I'm going to verify right now.
I just wanted to ballpark about what it'd be. So that's fine. Thank you.
And that's for bus drivers?
Beginning bus drivers.
Beginning bus drivers?
I was three cent off. It's 12.67.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on that item?
Mr. Chair, could I just add one piece to that?
Yes, sir.
I do believe there's another tremendous asset provided for our new bus drivers and that is the CDL training that is done here within the district. That's very, very valuable.
Right.
So I think when we do share about bus driver vacancies and if we're, we're advertising that, that's an important piece to share because that's of, that's of great value to the individual. Just wanted to add that.
Sure. Thank you. Sir?
Yeah. When we put them through that CDL training, do they have a requirement to stay with us for so long after they get the CDL or are they free to just go right off to somebody else?
We currently do not have a requirement that they stay within our employment. That may be some of the things that you see as we come forward with our plan.
That, that might be a good one right there. Yes.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Anything else under Finance and Business Services? Moving into Purchasing. I'm not going to rush through because I want everybody to have the opportunity to scan that, those items. Although they've been answering a lot of questions, Human Resource Services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
When will we discuss the process for filling the general counsel position?
Is, what item is that?
I think all we have on the agenda at this point is approving the job description. But I, I didn't know that we were going to wait until after our January meeting to move forward or whether we wanted to discuss the process at this point.
Where is that item?
It's under HR. It's number 7B, I mean 7A is the, no, that's not right. Yes, it is. Yes, yes.
Thank you. I had it parked, but I did not. All right. Let's discuss a little of it now. First of all, everybody is still in agreement to what we decided yesterday. Mr. Leonard, you have that correctly done in the agenda now?
We do. I'm checking right now to see if it's been linked, but I
It hasn't, the amendment hasn't been linked yet.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're fun.
I don't think we
Yeah, we're, we're fun, aren't we?
I don't think we need to see it. I think we're all in agreement. Okay. Ms. Hightower, your question?
Yeah, I just, you know, we, we discussed briefly in November, you know, kind of a process. But I just wanted to make sure that we were all in agreement about the process and what it would be and what the timeline would be. I know Ms. Goshorn and Ms. Buswell have been working on locations for where the position should be advertised. You know, it is the Christmas season and I don't know, I'm assuming we're going to let HR handle. The applications will come to them and then, but I'd like to discuss how long are we going to leave the position title open? Are we going to start advertising it immediately after the job description is posted? Are we going to wait until January to post it? Those kinds of things.
Opinions? Yes?
I have no problem since we approved that job description and go ahead and announce it and let HR handle it like they do any other job on the time period.
Mr. Fetzko?
But one thing I went, Mr. Leonard, would you explain what a normal open window would be?
Yes, ma'am. The normal window for an admin job is now five days. I perceive you would want it to be open longer than that.
Yes. I think you're going to get that, you're going to get that direction right away.
Okay.
I just wanted Mr. Adams to know that.
Yes. I agree that as much as we could go through HR and keep things on the same keel, then we don't open ourselves up for any kind of complaints about what we do. Extending the timeline, I think is a reasonable thing to do. Mr. Leonard, I think that the, the thing that normally happens if it was a, a district level position, superintendent would make the request, it would come down to you. But if there was some stipulation in there that with this posting, we want it to be open for four weeks, that, that would be the only difference. And then your department would follow through and get with the appropriate people, whether it be Ms. Goshorn or whoever, as to where that advertisement would go? That's a long question.
Luckily, the other day, meeting with Elizabeth and Robin and having conversations with Ms. Goshorn, we have several places that we would like to be able to post this job, not just on our site. If you want me to, I can go through those with you and you can tell us if you agree or disagree.
Please.
All right. It would be on our school district in the winocular system. We would hope to be able to post, and not all of these cost money. Some of them do, but
Please designate which ones cost.
Okay. You'll have to help me, Elizabeth. I'll try to remember. The Escambia-Santa Rosa Bar Association, we would like to post it there. We would like to post it with FASSA, Florida School Administrators. There is a Florida School Board Attorneys Association that we would also like to be able to post it on that. And then the Florida Bar Association. One of them, I can't remember. Elizabeth, was like $300 or $400. Do you remember which one?
Ms. Buswell, do you want to go to the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
I spoke with a gentleman at the Escambia-Santa Rosa Bar Association and there's, we can do, we can pay them and they do what's called a e-blast. It's a paid e-blast. And there's two options. You can send it to just their members or every attorney in Escambia and Santa Rosa County. And what that does, it'll be a one-time thing and they will send it out as an e-blast and we can put whatever we want that to look like. And we can go back and forth with them and have a proof. And it can have just the job description. It can have our logo. It can have whatever we would like. And then included in that, they will post on their page a job link to the descriptions because they have job openings. And then it'll just say Escambia County School Board Attorney. And then click here and it can actually be directed to any page we want, whether it's back to our page or like a LinkedIn or something. But I want to say for non-members, I want to say it was around $350 or $400. But again, it would go to every single attorney in these two counties. And then with the Florida School Administrators, that is free because we have paid membership to them. And I believe Ms. Goshorn said that Mr. Deetson would handle posting to the Florida School Board Attorney Association. So I think we'd have some ways to make sure that this gets out to everybody.
Yeah. What is, Mr. Superintendent, you've been reading job openings recently. So what do you think would be a good date to start this advertisement? I mean, are we, are people really going to look at it between now and Christmas?
Well, I was, I was thinking about that. I was thinking the two weeks would be a good extension of time where we're not really delaying much on our, our end. So, so I can see that just as a bonus, two weeks, and then still maybe be able to move forward in, in mid-January. So that was just my logistical thinking on that, on that piece because I think the longer we do have it out there, it gives time for, for word to, to spread. Another organization I was thinking about that we might want to share is the Florida Association of District School Superintendents because we may have some superintendents out there that know of people who want to get into educational law or, or have had some experience and say, hey, that's a great county. You want to go apply, you know, type of thing. So, so I just wanted to add that piece. But I do, I do think the longer it is out there, the wider net we are, are casting for, for candidates.
In saying longer, are you saying start the advertisement soon?
I would, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
I, I think what he was, what I interpreted you to say was that we could go ahead if we had an advertisement ready, which I'm not sure we do. Mr. Leonard can probably help us. I loved what you put is the job summary could be, I don't know that we need that many words, but if we started it on the 16th of December and closed it, we come back to school on the 4th of January, when would you anticipate that we would like to have somebody in place? I think you, you start from there and you back it up. So if you want to have it on the February board meeting, then, you know, realizing that you've got a vet, we've got to have a meeting, all of those things. But if you don't, if you don't want somebody, I mean, we can always have a special meeting just to, to do the attorney.
Right.
But if we did a week in January?
Week?
Just a week after the 4th? Or you want to go to the 15th of January?
I was thinking about the 15th myself.
We're of course going to do whatever you need us to do. My concern is, I know that we will be able to have our posting because we control that very, very quickly. What I can't, what we can't control, even if it's a free posting, is how quickly FASSA or FADS gets it out there. But Mrs. Hightower, you're absolutely correct. What you've got to decide is when do you want to be able to have someone here and then back up from that. When we spoke the other day in a little brainstorming session about this, we were looking at a posting of at least 30 days. And then that gives us the two-week window of the, of the holidays. And then looking towards the end or close to the end of January. But if that's, if that's too long, we'll back it up from that.
I personally would, I personally recommend that the month of January be open just to get everybody looking and talking. Because for some people, and I know that I, I've heard from people that say they, they know someone might be interested, the first thing they have to do is figure out, do I really want to do this? And, you know, do I want to leave my present position? Do I want to do this type of work? So, I mean, I, I personally don't see any reason not to run it through the 29th of January, which is the last Friday of January.
Good for me.
At 5:00 p.m.?
I have two 5s.
Yes, ma'am. It closes at 5. It would close at 5. Okay.
Okay. So can, we have an agreement that we're going to run the advertisements through January the 29th at 5:00 p.m.?
I think the system actually, I think the system actually closes the job at 7:00.
Okay.
Is that, anybody opposed to it closing at 7:00?
I don't know.
If that's what the system does.
It is what the system
Whatever doesn't make you have to do it.
We are definitely being run by the system, aren't we?
Does it add extra people?
It's not being run by me, I assure you. Okay.
And it's central time?
It is.
When to start?
We would, I, I recommend, as the superintendent said.
We start it on the 16th or as soon as we get the, the advertisement written?
Right. Well, we have to approve the job description.
Right.
Legally, we will approve it the 15th. So if we can have something ready the 16th, let's go.
I, I have a question, Ms. Goshorn, because I, I want to make sure that I understood her email correctly. You may have to go to the mic. When you said Mr. Deetson would advertise, he's not writing the advertisement. He's just agreeing to get it to somewhere.
That's correct.
Okay. And where is he going to put it?
In, on the Florida School Board Attorneys Association website. So it'll go out basically to every attorney in the state of Florida.
Sixty-seven.
You know?
Or more?
And especially attorneys interested in education.
Okay. And we, in between your research and Elizabeth, were, were there timelines that anybody gave you that it had to be to them by X date? Now with this electronic digital system, I'm not, you know, back in the day when you had to get it in by a certain day of the month, a week, so it could be published the next month. I think now pretty much it rolls, doesn't it, when it comes to them? Or do you know that?
Nobody that I communicated with gave me a deadline.
Okay.
Other than the Escambia-Santa Rosa Bar Association, in addition to having a website, they have a, a publication, the summation.
Yeah.
And there is a deadline for that and there's a cost associated with that.
Do you remember the cost?
$20 for a two-by-three ad?
And I think they said that was quarterly or month?
Yeah. And it's
I don't think that that was fixed.
Okay. But they're, but they, they have the digital presence, but that cost us how much?
That's what I wrote down.
Thank you, Ms. Goshorn.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to quibble over the amount because we're interested in getting this out to as many qualified people as possible.
Yes, sir.
So, well, will you write the advertisement for us, please? You're the chair.
I write the advertisement?
In conjunction with Mr. Leonard or, or, I mean, you know, we need to designate someone to get it done so it gets done.
And I think that Ms. Crosstag is just anxious to get involved in this because I saw her whispering in, was you see?
We, we've taken a look at all of the language that you talked about as you were preparing the job description. And Dr. Etler did have some really good language that will help us globally put this out there. So that's what we will do. We'll make sure that it's
But you repeat that. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, you, you heard it. You heard it.
The star shines bright.
So we will use that and we'll, it'll be professional.
Well, I mean, it can just say Escambia County School District needs an attorney.
No, it will not just say that.
They know that.
Short and sweet.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. So we, is, is there any other concerns that we need to discuss? We did discuss, and this can wait till our next meeting, but we need to be thinking about it. A committee and we needed to have, be thinking about, we, I think we had 10 members on the committee in our discussion earlier.
You had 10 members.
I did?
Yes. You added a lot of people to mine.
I did. Okay.
I had like five.
I like big committees. But anyway, that probably, we need to put that on the workshop agenda for January, that we will come, we will discuss the committee that will screen the applicants.
Do, do we need to? I know when you do a, a description on your website, how do you set the, you know, like what we did with the superintendents, we gave them, you must be available at this time in order to be interviewed. Do we have to be that specific, Mr. Leonard?
No, ma'am. You do not.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure.
All right. So number one, we're going to get the advertisement out. So number one, we're going to get the advertisement out.
Yep.
HR will be taking care of that and be ready, be prepared in January to discuss a committee, a selection committee, anywhere between 5 and 25. No, I'm kidding, 5 and, not a too large a number, but an odd number. Anything else that we need to put on our radar getting prepared for this? Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Buswell, can you think of anything else we probably, we can do it in January, right? Okay.
And anything else, ma'am? It's affecting your life more than anybody else's, so we should ask. All right. Moving on. Thank you for reminding me of that, Ms. Hightower. Let's see, HR, any, was there anything else under HR? Was that Mr. Leonard that said no? All right. Operations.
Chair?
Sir? Yes, sir.
Yes, I want to speak about the five-year plan.
Speak about the five-year plan, okay?
Discuss the five-year plan.
There's, there's nothing above that. Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. First off, I want to say I want to appreciate Sean Dennis and Mr. Wosden on the great work they did of trying to do something to make that report better. We have had discussions since then because like yesterday, there was a hearing where the county, the developer was using our old five-year plan in a 90-acre tract in the Tate District, and they were pointing out, the old plan where it said Tate High School's going down 10% utilization, no problem, you know? Even though we've got a quasi-type concurrency. And I, I think Mr. Dennis came up with an excellent plan to, because we're doing this for a state requirement, but it's being actually used with the county. And I think Mr. Dennis came up with an excellent plan that will make me be able to vote on this Tuesday night. So, Mr. Dennis, do you want to take it from there?
Well, I appreciate the comments, but I will tell you that...
Good, great job.
Mr. Wosden and Mr. Coombs in Transportation did the work. Their, their work, our brainchild collectively.
Good job.
For the benefit of those that did not have the data that we've provided you as a board, we took the relative proportion model as the baseline like we talked about last time. Then Mr. Coombs was able to take historic enrollment data for every single school and then extrapolate based on the slope of the, of the, of those curves out five years to get some real-world projected estimates. And interestingly enough, when it was all said and done, the aggregate district enrollment estimate was within 100 FTE of what the state of Florida suggests that it would be, which again shows that decline. And of course, we had a lengthy conversation yesterday about the need for working on our enrollment numbers, and the ID group is riding that wheelhouse along with a lot of the other work that we're doing. So I'm very confident that those slopes will flatten and then eventually go on an upward trajectory. The good news is this document is updated every year, and so we'll be able to illustrate those, those changes each and every year. I also would like to let the board know that Mr. Wosden took to heart the comment that you all made, and hopefully by the end of next month, we will have a narrative-type work plan, not unlike what you saw Mr. Adams provide you from Sarasota County. It gives a lot more substantive background information on what the numbers really mean. And I think that in and of itself is the most valuable enhancement to our process that we've made.
Ma'am, do you have a question?
I, I just wanted to commend Mr. Dennis and his staff because I inadvertently skipped over one of the emails he sent to us that had all of these lovely pictures and colors and, and I really do appreciate you making this available. And as the planning board member, I know every year they ask for us to give the, give their five-year plan so that, and it gets to the planning board for them to look at it. So I think that's, you know, we, we appreciate the fact that the county is still working with us, even though it's not a requirement anymore that they do so. But one thing, where was I going with that? I sent to Dr. Smith and Mr. Dennis that Mr. Jones had requested that the school board meet in a joint session with the planning board. And I have sent back our dates that we normally meet in January and February and asked him if he wants to meet at one of those times on one of those days, not necessarily during our time. But I have sent that with their blessing back to him for him to give us some dates. So all of the things that we're doing here will be very beneficial if we have that conversation.
That's true. One of the items I...
Wait a minute. Let's go. You have anything?
Not this.
Now you can go. One of the items that I, I was hoping that we accomplished and I think I have agreement on is that with the report that goes to the county, that we have basically a cover letter. Could you speak on that, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, sir. What you are actually acting on as a board is our supplemental to the state, which for all intents and purposes is automated in their system. We always provide a copy of, of this plan to the county as a part of our quasi-concurrency effort, and it's also a state requirement. So when we submit it this year, as we do every year, we'll, we'll provide a cover letter that basically articulates although the state suggests this and the numbers suggest this, we are experiencing regional growth and have data to support that. And also perhaps alert them that we will be providing more of a narrative format in the future.
So in other words, Patty, we know Helen Carroll's not going to be at 70% in five years. That's in this report we're going to be approving Tuesday, okay? So at least with that cover letter, and I only picked out one school, there's more, with that cover letter that'll tell the county planning department, you don't, this is a state requirement, they're predicting this enrollment drop in five years. We're trying to make it work for their requirements, but it should not be used as a actual what that school is going to be in five years for the county purposes. And am I stating it correctly?
Yes, sir. In so many words, what we're going to articulate is that these are theoretical numbers.
Right. So I think that is a, is a win-win. They did the best they could, and they had to go on these little short trends we have. And I think, I think you're right with this, more like a Sarasota plan, that would be a better plan to hand to any stakeholder that wants to see actually what's going on.
If, if I might, so in that same cover letter, can you put that we don't levy 1.5 mils? Because that drives me crazy that you're having to put that in there. Because, you know, I'm the one wanting to go there. And then the other question I have for you, did you look into my question about why we didn't have numbers for Success Academy and Camelot?
Camelot, we did. And of course, both Camelot and Success Academy are, for lack of a better way of putting it, student behavior-driven enrollments. And although we have a cap, if you will, or we try and target no more under the contract for Camelot in a year, there is absolutely no way to predict or forecast how many we'll have. Ideally, we'd like to drive it to the number that's actually illustrated there, which is zero in both those instances, but we don't have a good formulary to go ahead and estimate those. And that's probably not the, probably not the answer you want, but that, that's the best we can do with those two programs. And also, remember, enrollments, neither of those programs have attendant zones, so you can't correlate them really to all the other metrics that are in the survey.
Okay.
Dr. Smith?
I wanted to piggyback off what Vice Chair was sharing on, on that cover letter. I think what, what the important piece is there is we want to be as, as accurate as possible, and the state reporting document has that formulaic approach. And so I think providing as much accuracy to our constituents who may be going to the county to get that information can, can be helpful because we want them to have a good feel for, for what they're looking at. And I think with the, the cover letter that Mr. Dennis speaks of, in, in essence, provides a disclaimer that, you know, let's, let's not, when you drive Nine Mile Road or Pine Forest Road and you see the traffic congestion, be, be careful on looking at this data, it's, it's based on a state formula type of thing. So I can, I can see that being a very helpful thing, just so our, our citizens have that scope.
Anything else?
Well, I, I agree, and I, I just want to thank you again, Mr. Dennis, Mr. Superintendent. And I think that cover letter will solve all the issues in the local level, and that'd be a great thing. Thank you.
Ms. Hightower? Dr. Adler? Anything?
After the meeting, I need to ask you about one of these because it has the line dropping all the way off to zero.
That's, that's the challenge when you have a quick slope in the last two years of their enrollment.
Okay. I, I wonder if there was something I didn't know about that school.
Well, you didn't, you weren't at that meeting.
I missed it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. I, I did forward this to Mr. Dennis for his group, and this is that data analysis company that me and Paul were high on on a conference a couple of years ago that used us as a example with four or similar where you can just touch a button, look at the enrollment in each schools, trend lines, the whole bit. So he's, he's going to check into it. But it does curriculum and, and finances. So you can look in and compare not only to the different schools in Escambia County, but also across the state. So...
Did you have any comments before I go out to Mr. Marcanyio? Mr. Marcanyio, do you have a quesadmo?
Just a quick point of clarification. The Success Academy program is really more of a academic deficiency program. It's not behavioral-driven in terms of students attending that. It's more about students that have fallen behind academically for a variety of reasons. Just wanted to put that on the record.
And one of those could have been their behavior.
One of them could have been.
That's right.
Yes.
But that's, you are correct. We are looking at improving academics.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, Ms. Hightower can say, in our tenure on the board, predicting the enrollment at a school is nigh on to impossible, and the trends of a school are nigh on to impossible. My largest elementary school is not as large as it was when I got on the board. Why? Because them people are getting old, and they're not having people move in, they're moving into other subdivisions. And I'm looking at one of my neighbors who lives out there, and his kids have graduated, and he's not, and just like I have, do not have kids attending school. You never can predict where they live and what it's doing to our populations, and I don't know how they think they can at the, at the state. I wish they would come here and ask us and let us, give us some information. And new subdivisions, it don't, you know, just don't get on the road too fast out, around on District 1 and District 5 because you're going to run into a contractor trying to do something, and it's been a bone of contention all over this county. We are, we are tearing down and building houses and demolishing trees everywhere till I guess we'll either run out of trees or run out of people. But it's, it's, and I'm sure, Dr. Smith, coming from Orange, you certainly have experienced everything that we're talking about at a different level. Is that true?
There have been more than one or two bulldozers in Orange County, yes. Converted to Orange Groves, many of them, yes.
I appreciate the fact that the county is actually looking at a document that pertains to schools, but I do like to, I, that cover letter probably needs to go on every page of the document.
Yes.
It doesn't need to go on just one page at one time. Every time someone looks at a document down there that deals with us, they ought to have to say, but this may not be the real story.
Yeah.
So I, you know, or maybe you should call the superintendent or the director of operations. So thank you very much. We seem to have a unanimous feeling of that, the tentative workforce plan. All right. Anything else in operations? The other items are coming from, anything else is coming from the superintendent. We've moved forward to appointments, disciplinary review assignments, and expulsions.
You forgot the item from the board.
Oh, it's not highlighted.
I know.
I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, and the, there's a highlighted item on there. If necessary, I will extend the gavel to the vice chair and make the motion if she is willing to serve. Ms. Hightower, are you willing to serve?
I am.
In the position as the board member to the Escambia Children's Trust.
Thank you very much. I would be delighted.
All right.
I'll, I'll make the motion to nominate or approve it, to put it forth.
I'll second. So we have, okay, we have a gentleman's agreement of who will do what, and we appreciate you doing that. I think it's going to be a very valuable organization, which got a lot of attention from the public already in the fact that it was, it was voted on. Okay. And thank you for calling that to my attention. Anything else? Let's see, we do have audit information. Do I see David? No? Oh, you want to...
Michelle's here.
Michelle, how are you, ma'am? Would you like to make a comment?
Great work, by the way, as always.
Oh, as always.
I'm really hard to get all the schools done before Christmas break, which we succeeded, so I'm very proud of that.
Very good. Anything spotlight you want to say?
Actually, this year, for whatever reason, seemed to be an easier year, which is surprising as far as the results of the schools. Not easier for, for us. We were all quarantined when we started all of the, all of the school audits, but actually that was to our benefit because we could go get the records and then we could be at home working. So it, it made our lives a little easier, and we were able to still be very, very productive. But I will say overall, for my year's experience here, this school year, as far as audit findings, I think the schools are doing a better job, if you will. I think the school district is doing a phenomenal job trying to train the school bookkeepers as well as administration staff. So we're excited about that. They kind of, that's something new that they've kind of started, and I think we'll see some progress. So very pleased with that.
Thank you very much. And I, I agree with your comments that the, the people that are doing these reports are better trained.
Yes.
They take it very seriously. Your department is no longer looked at as, oh, no, here they come, but as a welcoming and helpful group, and that's the transition I saw when I was serving as a principal.
I appreciate you saying that.
My, my bookkeeper did not say, oh, no. It's, they helped me.
Good.
And we understand.
I'm glad you did that.
We understand what we're doing and, and now, some of my coaches didn't always say that when the bookkeeper was fussing at them, but that's, that's the trend.
Well, then she's doing her job.
She's doing her job, and she kept me out of trouble.
That's correct.
That's exactly right. But we do thank your department, and we thank you for being here, and...
I would like to make one additional comment. The first items were about the school audits.
Mm-hmm.
Our second item was the district-wide report.
Yes.
You'll notice on it, there were only really two audit findings that we brought to the level of district-wide. I think that shows the progress as well. We also offer additional comments of other areas. May not be an audit finding per se, but just some recommendations we make. We always, always have full cooperation of the county operations department. And the additional training that we were going to suggest or recommend, they had already implemented before the issuance of this report, so would like to recognize their department for that.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We definitely know there's not any items from the general counsel, so are there any other items to be discussed today?
Yes. Two, two items. One... Two items. One, on Tuesday night, I would like to pull that five-year plan, just so we can inform the public again. We're going to put that cover letter and what we're going to do with it. But also, Patty has been, also has been nominated to another position this morning and voted on and approved, and that is as a member of the nomination committee for the Florida School Board Association. So she's in a pretty important position for the panhandle. She represents the panhandle. And they will select who's going to be the next president, vice president, treasurer. So very important position, and I'm really proud that Patty got on that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and thank you to Mr. Fesco for the nomination.
You mean, we didn't get to vote?
We could have.
I don't know whether he voted or not, because he wasn't on the screen, so...
Yeah, all right. Well, you're trusting I kept the numbers right, right?
In other words, Mr. Fesco, if she does a good job, we will thank you. If she doesn't, we will discuss that with you.
It's a flip of a coin, no matter...
I know, I know. Mr. Dr. Smith, anything?
Yes, I just, first, I want to say congratulations to Board Member Hightower, very well deserved. And I did just want to quickly make a note, this executive team, as we've heard today, the extensive work in each of their departments and the professional excellence that they bring, Mr. Marcanyio, Mr. Leonard, Mr. St. Seer, and Mr. Dennis, all led by our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Ross, they are quite an extraordinary group of people. And I just wanted to tip my hat to them, and thank you for your hard work and the outstanding leadership you provide.
So will there be a motion Tuesday night to reject the retirement papers of one individual?
I do it. I get to pay back my old football coach that way.
As he is checking the box of, the last thing I want, time I have to do this, Mr. Norm Ross will look different next month. He will have a lot more hair, but the shoes will be very hard to fill. And Mr. Deputy and I have been working together for a long time, and it's always been a great face to look out there and see and say, that's my buddy. And he's good for the kids. He's always good for the kids. We didn't give you a battery, I guess, tonight, today to make any tacky comments. But... Do you have any parting comments, or?
Well, I didn't come prepared with a statement.
You're always prepared.
It is.
Yeah, I guess that's the methodist in me.
Yes, it is.
But Tuesday night, I will ask for a moment with regards to next steps. That's as much as I can share at this particular moment.
Sure.
Sure.
Well...
Can we tell stories about him, then?
Can we?
Yeah.
Oh, I can tell lots of stories, but he can tell lots of stories, too, so that's...
Sure can. In fact, most of mine are documented.
That's exactly right. Did you want to tell a story?
You know, no, not, but, you know, well, I'll go ahead and tell it. When my younger son was at Pensacola High School, he had the privilege of having Mr. Ross as his principal. And we happened to be traveling in Europe, and the USA Today that was in, I think we were in Italy at the time, had on the front page a story about Pensacola High School, and about a student who chose poorly about what to bring to school. And my son, who was at that time maybe between his ninth and 10th grade year, said, well, she should have known not to do that. Mr. Ross had very clear rules and expectations of the students. And I remember that specifically being said, you don't bring that to school. So they all remember what he says, even as students.
And whether they liked it or not.
That's right.
It was a lesson for the rest of their life, and that's what my buddy Norm Ross is all about, is training kids and students for the rest of their lives, and the impact he's made upon them. Even if he may have beat me at golf a couple of times, I still remember the great lessons.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. That, I hope people understood where you say that article was published, because it was a very hot-button issue here in Escambia County, in this region, in the state, because it was portrayed by the media that even my mother, who's deceased, was living at that time, called to ask, had I gone crazy?
But you assured her.
There's expectation.
Yes.
I grew up under expectations, not just at home. When I walked the streets, when I went to school in particular, and at churches as well, there were expectations. Most importantly, with those expectations were consequences. And I'm not on my soapbox yet, but now that's one of the things that I find is missing in our society, as a pivot point in working with God's most precious gift, which are children. Again, a brief message on Tuesday night.
Thank you, sir. Once again, Dr. Edler, thank you for the wonderful refreshments and the helping of us to think about the season. And it is unfortunately the season we eat too much, but besides that, it's a wonderful season. Yes, sir.
Can I nominate Dr. Edler to provide those sausage and bacon at every meeting?
Happen on my one.
I think the answer was you did not get a second.
You did get a second, huh?
All right, folks, Tuesday night, 5:30. If I don't see you, have a great holiday season. This meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, behave yourself so you don't end up on the HR report between now and then.
Please don't get on the agenda.
I was trying to figure out, all these oranges, kind of like a white, when you look at the thing, I mean, they're all...
It's kind of, it looks like a school closure, doesn't it?
Does it have to have a separate button?
Because I think...
Like a resolution?
I don't know whether it's telling Cairo.
Okay, so I have to ask, is there any input?
If it's either of those, I don't know anything.
Are you going to put that on my script? Thank you very much, ma'am.
So I understand he wants to pull it.
No, no.
And that's, I know that's one of the things Kevin has been...
Thank you, ma'am.
I just want a heads up.
So, yeah, how can that be?